And Diane? That's possible. I would have gone there, but somebody told me not to. Okay. All right, well, we'll appoint. Who? There's Ann. Okay. Ann's here. Did you say that Diane is here? We're here. We guessed. Okay. Okay, we will need. We will need to appoint someone for Donna who's not going to be here. So Tucker, would you please sit for Donna? And until Diane comes, Jackie, can you sit for her?
Tucker.
Tucker for Donna and Jackie for Diane. Okay. First order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes of February 6th. I watched the TV and I read the minutes and I don't see anything that needs to be fixed. Anybody got any comments? I think that's within the margin of error. Okay. All right. We didn't take any actions anyway, so. All right. Let's approve the minutes as submitted. Okay? No need for change. Okay, the first order of business is the update from the Ridge at Talcott Mountain. I think someone is here from Talcott Ridge. TJ? You want to go up to the? Remove the podium on you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm happy to report in our agreed reporting format at your meetings that the Ridge submitted a March 2nd letter to the commission which indicates the status of the northernmost commercial structure at the Ridge. The floor trusses have been approved and are set to be delivered March 9th. Lumber is approved for delivery the 20th. Steel is released and scheduled to be erected the week of the 27th. And the windows are already on the site and need to be framed and installed. I'll give you copies of, circulate some pictures of the site as it exists today. And we'll be back. We'll answer any questions and we'll be back next month.
Okay. Anybody have some questions? Any questions for them?
I do. I, I, but I don't have questions on this report. It's a little thin. I thought we were going to get more relative to the products. And the likelihood of a meeting the goal of June 30th. Maybe there's no comment on it.
No, there's a comment. We fully expect to be done well before June 30th. That's the expectation of the company and that's the status of the job at this time.
TJ, I think they promised the schedule. That was the, I have not seen that.
I will make sure you get one next one.
Written schedule. That would be good. And you've told us what, you've told us that some things are coming in, but that's not the whole picture.
We'll try to get you more detailed schedules.
Thank you. That would be useful.
Mr. Chairman, I also, I do think that the commission is also looking for potential insight into the leasing arrangements and any positive news along that front or what's being done to lease property.
Last of, everything possible is being done to lease this property under construction, but the southernmost commercial property as well. Last time we were here, last month, we advised that we did have a prospect for the southernmost building that's ready to. The southernmost building is constructed. The northernmost building is not. And the southernmost building, we had a prospect for a tenant and that has not progressed to a lease at this time.
Okay. The other half of my question. I'm going back to the last time. But I'm still unclear as to how we find ourselves in this position. Then I, the meeting of June 20th, there was a motion approved here that set the end of the year as a target for completion. And yet ultimately saw a short document that was submitted. Somebody not not from the Silverman, but somebody else wrote a note, two Silvermans about the bond. It's clear there's no reference in the bond work to a target for completion. Yet there was a agreement or a motion that says the end of the year, it says December 3rd. It's in the TV production. It's in the minutes that we knew it. But yet, here we are. It never made it into the bond, which is what we were trying to work with. We wanted the bond to secure the date, not the bond to secure completion someday in the future. Now, I realize that hindsight doesn't always be helpful. We'd like to make sure that we don't get stuck in this position again with another applicant and another project. Can, can you explain how the firm agreed to June, on June 21st, on June 20th at that meeting, that they would have it done by the end of the year? And at the end of the year came and went and, you know, we hadn't heard anything. But obviously it wasn't done. And so even now as we sit here, we don't know why that is. How could it be in the minutes? How could the motion have been made? I don't understand the process. Did you write the bond agreement? I mean, did Silverman produce the documents or did George produce those documents? Who produced the documents that left the data? That's what I'm trying to get at here. How could the date not be in the agreement?
Of course.
Easily.
Because I don't think.
Easily. All the time the dates aren't in the agreement. You're hitting, you're just hitting this too many times for somebody to be patient. And with respect to the bond documents, your counsel reviewed the bond documents. You're better than having a date. Those bond documents say that the bond doesn't go away and my client pays premiums until the work is done.
Yeah, but we're worried about the completion date some day down the road. We wanted to secure that bond the end of the year. It's plain in the discussion in the minutes that anybody can go watch on SCTV. And yet we have no binding agreement to the end of the year.
There's been a lot of discussion from Silverman to you, to the staff, to everybody about what happened. They missed the date. COVID, supply chain, work. That's what happened to it. And we've, we've said that before and we'll say it again. I don't mean any disrespect, but, but we're beating a dead horse. I mean, they're on the, they're trying to get done.
It's a matter of which side you're on. I don't feel it's a dead horse. I think it's an issue for us for the future. We want to make sure this doesn't happen again. I think it was a really sad outcome for what was a hard effort for everybody. Well, there being no clearer answer available today than there was two months ago.
Okay.
Okay. I think we can move on.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the next order of business is the Vessel project. In light of the fact that there have been so many people interested in this, I think it might be a good idea for us to schedule a public hearing on this, on this project on the 20th of March. And let people have their opportunity to ask questions and make comments. And that subsequent to that, when we, when we actually consider the development and whether to approve it or not, we will have had all possible information brought out from the public and from ourselves to make sure that there is or isn't a clear public interest to stop it or that we'll go ahead with it. So if you guys have a comment.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard for a moment?
I'm sorry, who's that?
Me.
Attorney. Attorney Alden.
I just got a technical question before you set March 20th as the date. And I wanted to direct it to Mr. McGregor in terms of being able to publish notice. That's 12 days from now, not counting today and not counting the 20th. Yes?
I've been assured that we can do that.
Okay, I just, I wasn't aware.
I believe we'll be able to publish properly on the Thursday, on the next consecutive Thursday.
Okay.
Okay.
There's no mail notice required?
Excuse me. Attorney.
Sorry.
Back off.
Apologize.
Okay.
I'm 100% in favor of having a public hearing, but I don't, I just want to make sure everybody in the audience knows that unless we take some atypical action right now, there is no public input once we start the application process. This is a site plan application, no public input. And I think that the town would be better served. And we all would be by having a public hearing.
Would you like to make a motion? This is exactly what I was hoping. Pardon? Yes.
We wouldn't be able to finish until that meeting anyhow because we have to wait for.
Where we are also in process, you've got a simultaneous general wetland application going into general wetlands commission has a public hearing tomorrow night. They have not, obviously they have not read the decision. I believe that technically 65th day, so having a public hearing doesn't change your, the site plan requirements. 65th day is on or about March 23rd. So the public hearing would be within that time.
Or we can ask for an extension.
I lost attorney.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the Simsbury Zoning Commission scheduled a public hearing for the regular zoning commission meeting on March 20th, 2023 at 7:00 PM for the application 2203 of Vessel Real Estate Holdings LLC, applicant EAC Properties LLC, owner for a site plan pursuant to CGS Connecticut State. Statues 8, 30G for construction of a 55,030 foot, square foot unit, 80 unit multi-family development at 446 Hot Meadow Street. This is map, okay. And I believe that will be here.
The location of the public hearing will be here.
I believe so.
Okay. At the Simsbury Public Library.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second you. Second by Bruce. Comments?
I agree with you on that one here.
Great idea. Okay.
I'm for it. I think even though we may not be able to do anything for or against this, this development, I think it's important for the public to know that.
Okay.
And I think one way of getting, letting people know is through a public hearing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? Okay, it passes 6-0. Okay. That unfortunately, we also then.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to go ahead and make it clear to the folks in the, in the audience that we will not be discussing the vessel application this evening?
Right. Right. The public hearing will be the next opportunity and we will discuss it at that time. We will not, at this point, discuss the vessel application further.
Didn't realize that was going to happen. I thought we would have still hear the presentation.
In terms of the applicant.
Okay. All business. We've got some correspondence which will be deferred to the public hearing on the 446 Hot Meadow Street application. Staff has come up with two topics that they would like. Okay, everybody who wants to, please be quiet so we can continue our meeting.
Thanks, Dave.
If you want to continue our meeting, if you want to be set, please.
You had to do that last time. I heard that.
Okay. We have two things in our packet. One was the food truck regulation discussion. And the other one, which I think is important, is the cannabis text amendment update. And we have to take some action on that before the, well, I guess we don't have to take it before the moratoriums because we've been superseded with another moratorium.
I think we should be clear about that. We want to be clear about that.
Right.
We don't want to miss an opportunity to act on that.
Right. But we do, but we do want to pass it for the other components of the regulation. So food truck discussion, does the staff have some?
Laura's going to go ahead. You want to do food trucks first? Okay. Laura's going to help just frame the issue that we're facing.
Okay, can I ask the driver over there to zoom up on the on the text so that those old people like me can read it?
I think that's fair.
There we go.
That's a little much.
That's good for me.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, recently we've gotten a lot of interest about food trucks. They've either been seen in the area, different business owners and stakeholders have come to our office asking how they can actually have food trucks on their location full time. And currently since the regulations are relatively silent, you have like exceptions in public gathering in some areas, residential zones, vendors and carnivals. I'm kind of left with a little lack of guidance on which direction the commission wants to take this. And there's several different ways in which, you know, we could actually address this on a one-trip permit or do not one-trip permit food trucks. I have suggested drafting, which the purpose of this regulation will be to provide standards for local food vendors relating uses on private properties. I would suggest if you choose to talk to address food trucks, not to address them on public property at all, but only for uses on private property. So not necessarily address them on or not allowing them on neighborhood or the farm or school yard or on town sites. With the exception of going through public gathering. Just a brief definition of what a mobile food vendor is, a readily visible vehicle or trailer, which privileges are being sold. I said for a period of exceeding 30 minutes because there is the concern of ice cream trucks that would come into the neighborhood. How strict do you want regulations to be so that we can prohibit them? There's different ways in which you can do this. You can either allow it as an accessory use by right in any and all zoning districts, which would not require a permit. You could do it as far as an administrative zoning permit, which is a zoning plan for the application, which would go with the local lines officer or other planning staff. And those would be some suggested guidelines and documentation that should be provided with the application. Specifically written permission from the property owner, some identifying information on who the vendor is, the site plan and narrative. The commission can most certainly limit the hours of operation for this. Definitely within the fire marshal and the health district because they have their own codes of limitations. Currently, one of the problems with the food trucks right now that are there, there is no way that, there's no process. So the health district is not always aware that they're there. The fire marshal is not always aware that they're there. So they're not always necessary to eat. Food trucks checks being done because we have no process for us to be told that they're going to a particular location. You can certainly have restrictions as far as the signage associated with any kind of food truck operation. Or you can have them as a lab accessory used by a site manager, which they would be forced to come before the commission for a set location. And they have to comply with distance effects. Certain things to consider when we're kind of drafting this regulation, if this is the regulation we choose to draft or want to go forward with, is the different impacts on surrounding areas, including residents and businesses in the vicinity, noise, overall illumination. What kind of impact it might have on brick and mortar restaurants. Certain other towns have regulations for distances. So you can't have a food truck, for example, within 500 feet of a brick and mortar truck. To keep in mind different blockers, the hours of operation. Whether or not this is actually an accessory use, so if we're providing seating for the food truck, is there a wait service? Making sure it's not necessarily located as a primary use in a big block, like it's something that the commission wants to gain as far as organs concerned. And of course, the normal safety provisions of not interfering with vehicle or pedestrian traffic. There are certain possible exceptions you also might want to do. As far as food trucks are concerned, like community events that require them, because right now we already have a map that in play in which we know that food trucks are coming to a certain area. And also for private events, this is something I do get calls for fairly often and people going, my son's having a graduation and wants to have a pizza truck there. It's, you know, might not be something we want to get involved in. But just thoughts, and I was really looking to the commission for any kind of guidance on if you wanted to draft any form of regulation, which kind of permitting process you would prefer before providing sample language and coming up with certain ideas and finding out if the commission didn't want to go over with any kind of recommendation. But I have gotten different state holders, particularly for locations in which they want them, you know, fairly regularly.
I don't know that staff has formed a particular, you know, opinion on, on the best way to do this. We just know that we have had interest from individual property owners who want to have Chick-fil-A and stuff, their, their business location sometime more than a couple times. But we also have an occurrence that that's happening and that is now unpermitted. So it becomes a bit weird. It's an enforcement measure right now. Can't, we don't have the ability for you to come to a piece of property outside of kind of that special event. And as Laura said, we also have some folks who want to come in semi-permanent as an accessory used on the site throughout the summer or, or something like that. So we're seeing some demand and we're wondering whether you wanted to deal with it.
It's a difficulty, difficulty because they're temporary things and a lot of temporary things escape any kind of site plan approval. There is the possibility like the one in West Hartford where they have a property that's designated and they're going to have food truck gatherings there periodically. And I think that's something that the citizens of town would like to be able to control, not in their area or.
Any in favor of the administrative zoning permit? I think that gives us, like you said, the fire marshal, gives us the health district. So it gives them some overview so they don't have to come before the commission every time.
But it should be tied to a site in some way. I mean, that's our prerogative.
Certainly, even if it was administrative or, or a site plan that you would review, that, I mean, we would, let's just say that a, a business. And we're talking about occupied commercial property generally. We're not talking about vacant parcels or undeveloped parcels or residential parcels. If there was a business owner owning this property, wanted a food truck, you know, once a week, we would probably recommend showing that location on site to make sure that there was enough parking around it, that it was away from, you know, other properties. So yeah, we would recommend that it be shown on site in that way. When it, when it came once a week, that's the location it would be at on, on any particular.
Well, present company, for example, has their own food truck that they take around. And when they're not somewhere offsite, it's in the back behind the restaurant. I don't know how many acres they have there, but probably 10. So, and, and they don't really need our help.
I was just going to say, and the problem is.
What? Yeah. They don't need our help.
Wow.
So you kind of want to leave those alone.
Well, that's just parking. That's the difference in operating. That's not operating.
Yeah, they are.
You're operating it on property?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was just a restaurant.
They have a picnic table. Actually, a couple picnic tables.
They brought in a food truck last year, last summer. Bright red. And Hopbrook has. Hopbrook.
No rights.
Millwrights, yeah.
Yeah, Millwrights does.
So we were, you know, the approach would be to address both kind of brick and mortar businesses that have food trucks. But some of our demand or our recent demand are from, you know, food truck only, food truck primary, not, not associated with the brick and mortar restaurant.
Well, I think the list of things that, that for an administrative permit look solid to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the easier way to do it than a site plan. We don't, we don't need to get involved bad enough that we bother to borrow.
That would be $250 to apply.
Oh, okay. There is a site plan.
They make a lot of money.
Well, I would definitely always ask for a location on any.
No, you can ask for the location without a site plan.
Yep.
Because even if you do something at a ball field, well, that's public property then.
How far can this town allow that or some.
Well, you know, what law offered is kind of a hope really of what they're doing. And what, West, in fact, West Hartford only has a center, places to go. Other places do treat it as, you know, commercial only on an existing parcel. Sometimes they manage days of the week or total time that they're to, to go there. But more often than not, our experience has been, you know, places are allowing them either on commercial property through an administrative process, or also some towns designate them on in the public right of way or on public sites only. So there's different ways to look at it.
But in Hartford, it's on street.
Right. By and large, our demand has been from private property owners of commercial property who are interested in having food trucks on their property.
Well, what's, what's preventing it now?
There's a regulation that allows it. So since we don't have the regulation that allows it, it's very interesting.
So can I ask a question? So if you have seen this zone office, there are reasons, you know, it's zone commercial or office and it's not zone restaurants. You know what I'm talking about. So are we, are we mixing our apples with ours? Food trucks into areas that wish that they're not so? Is there a reason to do that?
I think there is a reason because company, I mean, food trucks are a phenomenon right now. They're very popular. But employers will actually like to bring them in as an event for their employees. It's a special day. So yeah, you want it to be in an office park. And, and apartments are doing it too because it's cool for the residents to be able to have a special event on property. So I think you do want, you know, not tie it to the use of the property.
I think there's a difference between a special event and like every day at lunch, the food truck is there as opposed to a brick and mortar restaurant, kind of business in a place that is zoned and that. Does that make sense? Or, or a, a deli popping up nearby that could serve. Does it make sense? But I also don't want to hamper the business generation of food truck owners. Like it's, it's a great way to get started in the restaurant business too, so.
But if you're in the restaurant business and you're taking your customers, you're not going to be too happy about that.
If you allow a non-restaurant to have one. So instead of that party, that office party now, going across the street to the restaurant, they're sitting in the office eating food truck food. That's one concern, not a safety concern, but if there was a way of limiting to only restaurants. So I mean, if they're, that way the competition is not really an issue.
I'm not sure the competition is, is an issue.
Is the special event thing or?
Well, you know. That is a little, that is a little, a little unclear on that. I mean, I, I think we should be sensitive to existing brick and mortar. But my experience has been that they are not, you know, the food truck with the grilled cheese sandwich and, and you know, tomato soup is not, is not in direct competition on a, you know, a day in, day out basis with nor.
It's a city.
It's just a different, somebody makes a decision, it's a fast service approach. I mean, they're, I mean, they're, they're more in competition with McDonald's and. they're, they're, they're more in competition with McDonald's and, and Burger King's of all kinds. A fast nature.
At the Yale Medical School, excuse me, Tucker, for a second, at the Yale Medical School, and I'm talking ten years ago or more, there are ten or fifteen food trucks there every day.
They still are.
And, and all the doctors are out there buying their.
Yeah, you still have a hospital cafeteria, but people want choice.
Yeah.
And, and it's kind of fun.
It was a, so I thought, I don't know, but they're in the street there.
So we can see that's.
Uh, where are you, where are you?
This doesn't necessarily draft tax language.
Do any of these towns have a permit that costs money?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Because that is, that is, that is something, and that kind of offsets your, your brick and mortar because, you know, they're not paying taxes. Obviously, if you roll in from West Hartford and you set up shop here for a day, you're not paying any taxes. So that would be a way, at least for the, it's not the same as a brick and mortar, but there is some money to cover some of the costs.
Well, how much are the permits? I mean, if they're just a token amount, who cares?
Go ahead, George.
Why don't we go ahead and put pen paper? And I, I think, I think we could put pen paper and, you know, ultimately the, the funding piece is what process do you want to follow? I don't get that deep ones. And we can figure that out, the, you know, the kind of requirements, where we allow it, when we allow it, how we allow it. We need the same amount of the approved processes.
Right. And I, I think the administrative zoning permit is, in my mind.
Yeah, I think you have consensus there so you can, you know.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we want to have a site plan approval for, formal site plan approval. But I, and I also think that there are some as of right situations where you are going to let people do it, like you said on the bottom. Uh, food truck in your house.
Oh, yeah. Private.
Yeah. Or like the horse show down here. Uh, Fowley Farm has a horse show several times a year. And they have a couple of food trucks that come in.
They're going to get a public gathering permit. So that's an example for performing arts. They're going to have a public gathering. Yeah. So that's a perfect example. So I think that covers us.
Anyway, I think they, they got the sense of, of what we think. Uh, we'd like to make life easy for you.
The, the permitting process, is that a joint permit or do we have to go through selectmen for an ordinance on, on permitting?
So something you can write into your regulations as far as, as part of your zoning regulations, it would be a zone, it would be a application which would be paid as an administrative zoning permit. If you wanted to change the fee on that, you would be able to hire two coaches or something as far as, is that what you said?
A separate fee schedule for that?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. Because you, you don't want it to stay in price. It's just, I don't even know what it would be for. Yeah, the twenty-five dollar. And would that be once for, you know, a whole year?
Yeah.
Forever?
Right. Yeah, still have to think about that.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I think we need to do something there that's a little more fair.
I think I'm just concerned about the idea that like, so let's say like Marco brings in a food truck, okay? Well, you can't complain, the track rail can't complain that they're taking the customers all spare, they're eating businesses. But I would want a situation where like the local package store brought in a food truck. Because then it's, it's like a local restaurant. I would feel a little, I feel like I was losing out on someone I did use after he was. That, that would be my concern with, with where these would be allowed.
But we, we don't take that into consideration when you approve a new brick and mortar restaurant. You can't say, oh, you already got one next door, so you can't have one because you're in competition with the guy next door, right?
Yeah, we're not, competition is not really a good. Not a good answer. But I think competition takes care of itself too. Okay, let's let them do that. Cannabis text amendment. George, you wrote us a memo.
Yeah, so, you know, this is a very similar memo to, to I wrote right before the Board of Selectment acted. So we know that the, um, the board is active and has prohibited retail cannabis sales in the town for, for eighteen months from February, mid-February on. But, but that does leave us with the, the still uncompleted portion of the cannabis text amendment that included the manufacturing side, the cultivation side. So what I'm looking for is, um, just, just a little bit of guidance to come back to you. Uh, you've got to make some amendments to the, to, to, to the current draft meeting by taking retail cannabis out and making it not permitted. So I've got to figure out how to do that to you. But I, I did want to make sure you were ready for me to do that and, and, and bring back that draft with tweaks. And if there are any other issues that we need to deal with.
Melissa?
So I read the memo and I wanted to check back in on the conclusion that we could not pass a text amendment now that says, in the event that retail sale cannabis, retail sale cannabis should become permitted, it shall be here. Because what will happen is if the Board of Selectment moratorium expires and we don't have a text amendment, there will be an applicant with a site, with a, with a request for approval right there. And there will be, they can go anywhere they want and retail really will not have an effect.
Also, also if there's a referendum and it gets permitted by referendum.
And then if it's permitted everywhere, we don't have a method because we don't have a place.
I was going to ask that question. Why can't we keep our intention for where it would be permitted?
Yes.
But make that contingent on either a referendum approving it or the selectmen approving it.
Yeah.
Now, I think the town attorney told us that wasn't a good idea.
Well, I think he, he said that you couldn't, you couldn't approve it or allow it under your ordinance. Um, but perhaps with those caveats, that would be appropriate.
But he's, he's only speaking to retail sales. Because that's all the Board of Selectmen spoke about.
That's what you guys are speaking to. They're suggesting that we eat that language in essentially and say it will be effective if and when.
In the event that.
Yeah, I, I. I think that's a weird way to write a zoning reg, right? No, I think, I think you just go, just take out where we allowed it, that one area where we allowed it, just make it not allowed anywhere. And then reopen the process.
So that's what it is? You have to start a, you need to redo the process of retail in fourteen months or something like that.
And that, it's not a big loss, but I think, I think that's cleaner than forever to have a new zoning regulations. That if there's a.
It's amended at that time, but we don't count that in.
You say no, you say no, it's not. Yeah, just, just take it out. We're only going to approve it in one area. So all you're saying is it's not approved anywhere. And then if things change and it is allowed by, by the selectmen or by a referendum, then you just do another public hearing. And then you're only changing one little section. You only, you don't have to change all, you know, right now we have a, a big reg. All you'd have to change is that one little paragraph.
But there's one twist. If there were a referendum and the referendum approved the sale. Then, uh, we wouldn't have the text amendment in place to control where it was.
Yeah, the location is very controlled. Yeah.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't say where it was allowed.
We, we would not be able to control where it was allowed.
Yeah, no, we would because we would have, we would go now with, with our regulations saying it's approved nowhere. All right, so.
I agree with that, okay? Then there's a referendum and it, and it gets approved. Then our, that overrides our prohibition. And I think it falls to, to the state.
Well, I, I think it's your wording of your, of your, of your referendum. I don't think.
No, referendum, referendum has a higher priority than the selectmen.
Yes, touch. It overrides both.
No, because, because it would still have to meet zoning regs, whatever you're putting to referendum.
Not if the state has, the state has put to default.
That's, so, yeah, that's the curve is that if, if the referendum passes and you don't have regulations in place, the state says that that uses them permissible where other similar uses are permitted. So we would.
But if you're, if you say it's.
No, the referendum can override both the Board of Selectmen and the zoning in terms of can it be permitted or can it not be permitted? But they can't override this in terms of where we choose to cite it as zoning board. But if we don't choose to cite it somewhere, if we haven't even know, then the referendum could override both the Board of Selectmen and the zoning. And there will absolutely be an applicant ready to go.
So you're saying the state reg says that you have to at least stay it in one building in your town or else it can be anywhere?
Yes, exactly.
All right, I'd like to get the counsel.
Wait, isn't the referendum part of that? Not the state reg?
The referendum.
Yeah, the, yeah, the referendum passes, if it passes already. The referendum is not saying where we allow it to use. Remember, that's, I had a conversation, you know, we'll, we'll have a conversation with the town attorney. Um, we'll walk through those scenarios.
Yeah, that sounds a little too open for the referendum to be able to do that.
No, but initially, no, no, the referendum can absolutely override both zoning and what is elected. And initially, the initial cannabis regulations passed by the state would have only allowed one retail cannabis per X. And, and that's why we were thinking, right, so that's why we were thinking one spot. But then the new retail, the new cannabis regulations came into effect and they took that part out. So now cannabis can be allowed anywhere in town that similar locations are permitted unless we have a text amendment to contrary.
We would have it, we would have, so we.
But if the referendum goes, goes into effect and passes, says retail sales cannabis shall be legal. And we don't have something in the regulations saying where it's going to go. It can go immediately anywhere that retail.
But if we just say it's available, uh, forty-four, then that's, then that overrides that too because it could, you could put it on downtown Simsbury.
No, if we have the text amendment saying where it can go already, if it becomes legal, then that's where it can go. But if we don't have anything about it, if we're silent about.
Well, we wouldn't be silent. We would say it can't go anywhere.
Right, but that's what we have to have now to weather the referendum.
I think there's enough time to agonize over this as the referendum gets closer because the referendum, the signatures have to be submitted sixty days.
Yeah, we don't know.
Before the election.
It would have to be, and it has to be, has to be in the November election. It can't be.
I know, but the signatures have to be collected some number of days before.
Yeah, I think we need counsel on this.
And it's not effective until the referendum effect doesn't.
So this is what we're going to do.
May twenty twenty-three?
Wait a minute.
That's an arm or a term.
So, so no, no matter what, I mean, I, I, I would recommend that, that you certainly take some action on the manufacturing piece before your moratorium expires.
Okay.
We're not finished with the retail piece. And we're getting the answers on the retail piece. And I'll go through those scenarios with the town attorney. But I, so we do have a moratorium. And so if we don't take action at all, then that cultivation is permitted.
In nine.
It would essentially just give you permitted how we're trying to permit it now. Without a special exception. I think you do. If you want it as a special exception, a, a special permit, special exception, then I, I do think you need to take action, yes.
What about what we already have? How does that affect us?
Remember, we, it's, we're, we're, the ordinance only allows medical marijuana. You have to air, you have to air.
Okay.
You have to have manufacturing of cannabis.
Okay.
What, what about the, the issue that, um, um, the apartments brought up about the, the current plan? Are we changing anything there? They should still be special exception for any changes they want.
I suggest, I, we believe that's what the language says today.
Okay.
And I, I think maybe we ought to tweak it a little bit to make that language stronger so it's clear as day. You'll have to make that decision. Either you want Curly or someone like Curly to come back in for a new special exception if, if they, to, to allow for essentially retail cultivation or allow, allow them to continue without requiring that new special exception.
I thought they announced to us that they were already, both the retail and the medicinal. They, they, their speaker said that at our meeting.
Our, our current zoning ordinance allows medicinal cultivation.
And what, what is the difference?
Well, I think the ship's sailed already, George, because that's what she said.
So isn't it at the retail level that that is decided whether it's medicinal or, or recreational?
So, 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 yes, I'm not, I wouldn't quibble with that. But again, our, we have the current, our current zoning regulations only say medicinal. So that's why we have to change it to.
Right, and they could only sell it to medicinal wholesalers or a medicinal channel. If they tried to sell it to a retail channel.
Know that.
Well, we wouldn't, but we would.
They're not labeled. When you grow the plant, it doesn't.
No, you wouldn't know. But, but you might know. I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah, I just think that section needs to be looked at.
We need to fix those things.
So I'll come back with revisions to the current draft.
Update them to what?
If we're going to allow manufacturing cultivation of retail cannabis, then we need to allow it.
In our draft regulation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we get the town attorney's recommendation with respect to retail.
Yes.
And how we protect ourselves.
I'll come back to full ends or something.
But it's more than just retail. It's everything but driving through town, shipping through town, we can control. All but that.
Yes.
Right. We can't control delivery.
You can't control delivery.
Right, but, yeah, that's part of driving through town. Okay.
Okay. Are we ready?
All right, do we have enough guidance for you?
You have what you need? Anything else that we have tonight, George? Anybody else? Melissa, do you have any legislative update?
Uh, we're working on the retail cannabis regulations. So there's that. We aren't talking about any, anyhow, yes.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Tucker? All in favor? All opposed? Thanks, guys.